Yes, that up here, uh, be better. Thank you.
I can hear you.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, go ahead and go start off.
Set down, just tell you kind of, I guess first, what I kind of like, if you would, if you kind of introduce yourself a little bit, tell us just a little bit that you don't have to get carried away. Just a little bit about yourself. I will tell you, I've got about five questions. I'd actually sit down and, and put up just to get a feel for.
Sure.
It's, it's going to cover a wide range of topics, but at least that's, at least for me, that's going to give me an idea of what you're thinking.
Sure.
But first, I probably would hear, I, cause I don't know any of that, I think.
A little bit about.
Yes. Sure. Um, so my name is Amanda Coffern. Um, I have, um, I'm from Clinton. I've lived, uh, in the Davis community, um, and raised my family there, my husband and I. Um, and, uh, worked in Clinton most of my life, um, with the exception of, of this, these last couple of years. Um, I've been on, uh, both my children went through Davis R twelve, um, start to finish. Um, I want my grandbaby to go there eventually. Um, and I work in, um, Overland Park, Lee Summit, and, um, soon to be Shawnee Mission. I work for a fertility company, um, a well-known fertility company in that area. Um, doing, uh, uh, hiring, um, I do payroll benefits, um, working with architects, architects right now on what will be our fourth clinic, um, uh, in Overland Park and, um, just finished a, uh, a major, oh, it's kind of our surgical area. Um, they come onsite every three years and, and, uh, make sure that we're doing everything we're supposed to do following policies and procedures. Um, but yeah, that's a little bit about me without going into too much detail.
That's good. I guess, I'm, I'm just going to keep it simple. Uh, one of my first questions is going to be, what do you think the role of a school board member is as far as advocating for parents and children?
Okay, so, um, the role of a school board member, I really believe, um, it's to be neutral in a situation. Um, especially when you're dealing with children. And it is to, you know, if it, if it's pertaining to a disciplinary action, if it's pertaining, depending on what it is you're dealing with. Um, specifically just to break it down a little bit, um, I think you have to be neutral. I, I, you know, especially when it comes to a small, a very small district where you know every single child and their family. Um, it's critical to remain neutral and to, um, you know, conduct a thorough investigation of the facts. If there were any witnesses, um, you know, uh, just to make sure you're, you, um, are fully aware of the situation. And, um, you know, follow policies, procedures. I'm a huge policy procedure. Um, you know, uh, the first thing you should ultimately do is look at your policies and procedures regarding whatever type of situation you're dealing with. Um, and, you know, um, get all the details, um, listen to other board members' opinions. Um, their sides, you know, what, what, what they've got to say. Um, but really as a board member, you're not one person, you are the board. And ultimately you have to make decisions for the board, for the best, what you feel is best for that child. Um, even when it's very hard and difficult to do.
Okay. Let me ask you this one, um, what I guess would be the deciding principles for you for the curriculum and sensitive topics that would actually, uh, like what goes in your life, what, what's allowed in your school that are probably trying to figure out a nice way to say this.
Controversial.
Yeah, very controversial, uh, type subjects. You guys may not have any, but it's going on in school districts and I'd kind of like to get your viewpoint of where, where you stand with stuff like this.
Well, and when I was on the, cause I was on the school board for 15 years at Davis R twelve. Um, and then board secretary at Clinton School District for, can't remember if it was six or seven years there. Um, you know, we had meetings, um, with especially at Davis R twelve. I don't really recall, um, meetings with the librarians at Clinton, but we would have meetings and we would actually discuss, you know, what they were purchasing, what they, you know, um, as far as I'm concerned, um, you know, you do hire that person as you're, the person you're going to trust is, as a librarian that, that has that role. Um, and you communicate with them, you find out what they are, you know, um, bringing into the library, what's appropriate for students. Um, you know, but again, as, as a board, you know, that's up to the board to decide. It's not one person's opinion, everybody has an opinion, of course. Um, but as a board, you have to have those difficult conversations. If you feel like it's not something appropriate, um, you know, then, you know, you need to have that discussion and, and, um, you know, determine whether that's something you should have in your library or not. Especially for, for, um, the grade level that we're, we're at. Um, but, um, you know, with that being said, um, there are also recommendations, you know, that, that, um, you know, as far as, and, and you would, I would probably want to see what, um, the state says too. If that's something that they're looking at, um, I like to keep up on what's going on, what's relevant, what's going on. Um, you know, across the state as well.
If, I'm going to pin you down a little bit more. Um, I guess, and I totally get it, it is, it is a board there. I guess my question is where, where would you come down on that?
As far as whether I feel like something should be removed or, um, I would let my opinion be known. I think I would want to look at the actual book and kind of, you know, and not just hear, oh, it's this book and, and make an opinion, but, um, you know, and, and determine what level that book, um, is made for, I mean, um, but I, I also want to hear the rest of the board's opinion and I like to hear all the facts. I'm, I'm one of these, I, I'm not, um, going to make a super quick decision without, you know, weighing all the scenarios in my mind. I want to know that I have totally thoroughly looked into something before I make some type of decision on it one way or the other. Um, but, um, definitely, um, you know, if, if there, uh, would be a lot of graphic sexual nature to something, um, would I, you know, would I necessarily want that in a, in a school library for, for any child to just pick up and, um, you know, I don't know that it's, what, what is appropriate for a second grader is what's appropriate for an eighth grader. Um, there's a lot of room in between there as far as, so, um, yeah, I, I would definitely want to weigh, weigh all the information I could.
Uh, the other one would be, uh, what's your, I guess what your views on safety policies are for the students and staff? And what kind of type of policies would you support?
Um, of course, the policies and procedures, um, are coming from MSBA. And, um, you know, they are, their attorneys are, you know, supposed to guide us on what should be updated, what the new, based on legislature, what we need to have in place, what we don't currently have in place. And so, um, coming from just the background that I come from, um, I'm doing all the work comp cases. I'm doing, you know, I did the safety at, at the school district in Clinton and, um, I, uh, do it where I'm working now. Um, so, uh, you know, I, again, am huge on policies and procedures. Um, and I also, um, am one that I like to do drills. Um, you know, to make sure that everybody knows their role, knows their, you know, I know that you can't, um, perfect something like that, you know, when it comes to, but what would we do in this situation? What would we have scenarios, you know, and kind of, um, kind of play out what that would look like. Um, because just when you think it's not going to happen where you're at, it's going to happen where you're at. And then nobody has any idea of, you know, what to do. Well, you grab your policy and procedure book and you look and see what your policy says. And then you follow the procedures as to, you know, um, what's first, what's second, you know? And, um, so I'm a, a huge proponent of there's, there are reasons we have policies and procedures in place and it's to protect.
Sounds good. Um, only got two left.
Okay.
This is Canada. This question's going to kind of be the elephant in the room type. It's navigating the fly ash issue that's, that's going on down there. I know some of them, some people are wanting to close the school, uh, and some people believe that it's safe. How are you going to deal with this? How would you deal with this?
That is, it's a great question.
It's a tough one.
You know, I, that school has been around a long time. And if you can weed through all the rumors, all the, um, hatefulness that's been going on. Um, you know, ultimately it's to do best for the children. Um, they get a great education there. And I don't want to see that school shut down. Um, they get a phenomenal education. It's like having, um, going to a private school, the one-on-one. Um, the fly ash situation, um, you know, I still don't know so much about it yet. Um, a lot has, has, has been held back and hasn't been said yet, um, as far as, you know, um, and you've got multiple tests out there, um, which is very frustrating, um, to the whole community. Um, but I want to see that school there for years and years to come. And I want to, um, make it the place again that it was known for. Um, and I want, I want to get back to teaching the kids. And I want to not have all of this impacting them. Um, we need to get back to, to educating the kids. That's, that's what that school is there for. Um, now whether that is, we find out that, um, there's too much contamination or whatever and we need to, um, look at alternatives, um, it doesn't mean shutting the school, school down. It doesn't mean, um, you know, that's my thought. I, I invested in this school. I always have been. Um, which is why I'm back here after 15 years, um, thinking it's somebody else's turn to, to, you know, the younger group can, um, can go on the board and they can, you know, have an opportunity, um, while their children are in school. But, um, I'm back and I'm invested and, um, I don't know everything, but I, I'm a researcher. And I'll research and get the answers that I need.
Um, last question, this is, uh, can you tell me, uh, what you do in, were you yourself actually had a tough decision? When, and this is a perfect example, when the community was divided. And the information, you said it yourself, your information was.
Um, had this happen, my very first board meeting after being elected. Um, it was a personal matter, um, community was divided. And at that time I thought, what on earth have I gotten into? Um, but, uh, you know, part of it, the public isn't privy to every, every detail and that's the hard part. Um, so you just have to move forward and you have to reiterate that, you know, this is the information that we have, this is, you know, um, you know, this is how we're moving forward at this time. Um, you know, it's a lot easier when you're setting on this side than you're setting, when you're setting up there. Um, but I've also had to deal with the same things, um, you know, I've had to terminate employees before I've had to. And, you know, they've been very popular and why are you doing this to this person? So there are a lot of, um, difficult things that you have to, to do and I have done in the past. I'm prepared to do and, um, you know, you just have to do it in a way that you're following policies and procedures. And, um, you know, make those decisions. It's tough and you're not out to make friends. You just have to, when you, when you decide you're, you're going to do something, you're going to run for an office, you're going to, you, you have ethics. You have to, um, you know, maintain and withhold and, you know, and, um, you, you don't make a lot of friends and that's okay.
You pretty well covered a lot of things I asked too, so I really think that's good. At this point, in fact, I've just got Jake rattling, he's on the phone now. He's gone, anyway, he's one listening. Uh, Jake, do you have any questions you didn't want to ask? Amanda Coffern, that's who we're talking.
I would have the question, I just leave it under the pocket.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, I'll tell you what, we don't have any, we'll probably, we'll be a deciding and hopefully an answer tomorrow.
Okay, that's, that's my question was kind of a timeline of when.
We'll try to do it with, at most that are over near first, so that's all we're trying to do.
Sounds good. Um, and my only other question was, um, if, uh, we should be selected, um, then, uh, we would go ahead and fill out additional paperwork, have it notarized. Then, um, I'm assuming it would be similar to like when you actually are running for. And then, um, uh, as far as the, I've had, um, in, in previous, when I was on the board previously, I went through all the training, but we would go through that training, um, again, or maybe like so many hours of refresh training. Since you're there on the board, you can refresh.
Nothing, it's only until April.
Yes, yes. And then if we decided to run, then we would run at that time, just like, okay. I don't think I have anything else, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Barry, Barry. Barry Schmitty, he's not here. Wait a minute, he's nine fifteen. Barry, oh yeah, cool. Yes, Barry, go on in.
Where do I say?
Have a seat right up front, that'll be fine. How you doing today?
I'm fine.
Well, we're interviewing people today.
Yes, sir.
Anyway, Mark's got some questions and, uh, one thing there, I'd start off, give us a little history of yourself and that.
History of myself? My, uh, my name's Barry Schmitty and I own Jim's Sporting Goods. And I live right next to the Davis R twelve school. And I, um, I was on the school board for 18 years. And I, I got off maybe a year and a half ago when my, my term ended. And the only reason I got off is because my younger daughter, she, uh, graduated. And there was another young lady who wanted to come on and I said, well, that's a good time for me to get off. So I, I got off and she, she got on. I believe she ended up moving away. And I have four kids that went through Davis R twelve and my wife's alumni at Davis R twelve. And I am a, uh, I grew up in Montrose, so, uh, that is a small community, also a small school. So I'm used to, uh, small schools and, uh, I'm being a member of a small school.
All right. Everybody's pretty much, I tell you, everybody's getting pretty much the same question. I got five questions basically what it is. But what I want to know is I want to know what you think the role of a school board member, especially as for advocating for the parents and the children.
Say that again, I'm sorry, you, what, my, my role of a school board member is to make the good decisions for the, for the students, for the teachers and the staff. Make good, well-formed and be positive decisions.
If you had, I guess, how would you handle a conflict between your parents' concerns in the district? in the district or even state policy?
There's all, for policies set up to handle all that, they would, you would go through all those, whatever the policies are set up to, to, uh, the line of communication, you would follow whatever those are.
The, I guess, um, what, what would be your, your principles on deciding on curriculum? Or even, well, especially sensitive topics? Books in the library, uh, some of the other things that are going on in a lot of schools? How would you, where, where do you stand and how would you answer?
Well, I guess it would depend on what the, what the question is. But I like to kind of defer to whoever has the, the knowledge on that situation. If, you know, if the principal has the knowledge on that situation or the superintendent. And I'll listen to the teacher and what, what they have to say about it. Especially if it's on a subject that I'm not, uh, an expert on.
The, I guess, maybe let me take this a little deeper bit. Are you gonna err on the side of traditional family values, community standards, uh, age appropriateness, that type? That, that, that's, that's kind of where this question is, is hit. That's what I'm wondering.
Family that, yeah, I have four kids and they all went through school. And I have, uh, grandparents that live, we're all, we're all very family oriented. I would say yes to that question. I have, my parents still live in the area, my wife's parents live in the area, we're very family oriented. I don't know if I'm answering your question correctly.
Yeah, yeah. I, I guess. What I, what I'm, I'm wanting to know, I guess, is, do you, I'm, I'm probably already know the answer to this, but I still want to know. You believe that children should be protected from adult issues, basically?
Definitely.
Okay, okay, and I think, I think, but I, like I said, we've got, for Jim and me and Jake, we need to do the best that we can and get as much information out. You know, I, I mentioned years ago, you probably don't remember.
I'm sorry, but I don't.
And that's my kids' deep fall and all that.
Oh, well, I probably remember that part.
Yeah, yeah, so, but my concern, I'll just tell you, I, I, I want to get somebody in. My understanding from your guys' school, like I told you yesterday, you guys have done a great job down there. I don't want to be the one that comes in and agrees to put somebody in that wants to head a different direction. Whatever you're doing's working. So it's our job to come alongside you guys at least until April. And then that, your community can pick whoever you want there. That's, that's, that's all this is. But there, like I said, there was a few questions that I wanted to make sure of going in. Because being brutally honest, that's, that's going, what's going to determine my decision at least. The third, the third question was, is what's your views on safety policies for the students and the staff?
Safety policy, well, I believe that they, uh, uh, upgraded the facility on safety issues because it's a lockdown facility, they have, they have key fobs to get in. And I believe all the classrooms are locked during school day, I believe, I'm not sure during class. But I know they have safety devices in place. And, and I'm sure, I know, I know from being on those school board before that they follow all the policies that are recommended from, from, uh, from the state and things like that.
Like I said before, this is kind of the, the elephant in the room. Navigating the fly ash contain, contamination issue. I know some of the people called for closures, others believe it's safe. I want to know what your, what your thoughts are, what you think or how it was from.
I don't know if this is rumor or not, but I, they, uh, I believe it's DNR, those, uh, have said that we could go back. So, um, in my opinion, that, that's fine. And also my, you know, I'm living in it, I'm right there at the school also. And everybody who lives in the area is in, is living in, living in it also. So it's not just at the school, it's at your homes. So I believe it would be safe to go there. And I don't like to talk about rumors, but I hear that rumors that it's worse the further you get away from the, the, the source of it. You know, those are just rumors though, but I, you know, so I don't know.
Can you, can you tell me sometime, uh, that you made a tough decision? When the community, this is one of these issues, was divided? And the information was limited? What you yourself actually did?
Well, if information was limited, I would try to get more information and make a positive decision on correct and the most information I could give, could find.
Okay, that's, those are the only questions I've got.
That pretty well covered most of mine.
Anything else? All right, I just want to say that I was, yeah, can I kind of talk?
Sure.
So I just want to say that I was eight, I was on the school board for eighteen years. And I had four kids that went through there, like I said. And I, I believe that, uh, you know, uh, like this is my, this is my daughter that you, you, my, my oldest daughter, her, her, her thing that she loved was academics. And she was a, she came from Davis R twelve and she was a, uh, one of the top in high school. I don't know what she called that, they don't have valid, they don't have valid terms, but they have upper levels. She was a member of that. And I just know this because I made the awards for Davis R twelve, or not, for, for CCA. And the girl, the salutator, they have salutatorians, the salutatorians. The salutatorian from this year was a Davis R twelve graduate. So I believe that, I believe in the small school, small, the small, uh, small class size, one-on-one, one-on-one, uh, uh, teacher-student ratio, one-on-one attention that is, uh, positive. So you get that with a small school. So that's just, that's just my, I believe that's a positive thing. Anything else? I'm, I'm done.
Jake, do you have anything to ask, ask a question?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm listening, that's all, but yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, let's see, Bernie Joy.
Morning guys, hi Jake. I'm Joy Lawson and I've lived in that community all my life. I went to Davis R twelve, uh, graduated eighth grade there. I have not served on the board, but I'm willing to take that position and hopefully make the school a little better. I did run in April. I was on a ballot, didn't win, but that's either here or there. I'm ready to take on the job and do what I can do.
Okay.
What else you want to know about me? I'm retired. So I do have the time to do it.
Yep.
So.
Okay.
Same questions, but, uh, what do you think is the role of school board member?
Well, I think they need to, um, make the decisions and help the staff and hold the staff accountable for their actions. But first and foremost, everything is about the students. Whatever we need to do to make it the best learning situation for them. In my opinion is what the board does. But they need to help with financial decisions and the running of the school. That's what they're there for as a group. And I think that personal preferences and political issues should be left out of the school.
Good, good. The other one, um, is back to the topic of, uh, the curriculum, the sensitive areas, that, that type of stuff. Where, where do you stand with that?
Well, they start at kindergarten and go through eighth grade and children are very vulnerable at those ages. And I think if it's controversial, it doesn't belong in the school. I think they need to be older to make those decisions between them and their parents. So I don't think it belongs at school.
Good. Just gonna go quick. The, your views on like safety policies, uh, uh, and, and not just kids, the staff also. I guess, what, which ones would you support? What wouldn't you support possibly?
Well, I mean, you have to go by policies and procedures on the state level. And then I think the school probably needs to reevaluate some of the policies and procedures they have in place at this time on safety and how things are handled. I don't think things are always handled correctly. I think they're safe in the building as far as they're locked. You know, the doors are locked, they have an SRO now, he's there every day. But there, there's been some things happen in the past that weren't handled correctly. They weren't reported correctly and I think that needs to change.
Same, same thing, fly ash contamination. Where do, where do you stand as far as?
I've lived out there and, you know, we didn't have anything tested at our age. We decided we weren't going to test our property and I live kind of the other direction. I think what you need to consider there is what the parents feel about their kids, whether they want to send their kids to that building. Is it a good option? I want to talk to the parents and ask them, I've talked to a lot of them and a lot of them feel like it's not a good option. They didn't like the church building here in town either. It was not a good option, it's not set up to be a school. And have classrooms in it. And it's in another district, another school district. So I think if the parents don't feel their kids are safe there, then they're just not safe there. And they're not going to send them. I feel like.
Then this, this question actually kind of, it's the last one, rolls back into kind of that. With the limited information and the division that's very obvious is, is down in that area unfortunately right now. Can you, can you give us any kind of a scenario that you yourself have been in where you had to make a tough decision?
I didn't really have to, I mean, when I went to work, I just went in and did my job, you know, I wasn't over a lot of people or anything. But to the point I'm at now, it's still going to go back to number one, a hundred percent for the kids. Leave your personal feelings out of it and see what the parents, what they're on board with. The parents and the taxpayers are the important people. I mean, children first, but then you got to look at what the parents and the taxpayers feel is best for their community. And yeah, it can be a hard decision and it might, they, the parents might come to me and say, here's what I want. And maybe it's not what I was thinking, but if I'm on the board, I need to go with what the majority of them want. And leave my personal feelings at home.
Jake?
No, I don't have any other questions.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are you ready?
Okay, I'm ready, Jeff.
Okay, I don't have to introduce myself, you guys all know who I am. I'm gonna stand up because that's the way I am. I'm gonna be blunt and to the point. I do not care for the solar. I am involved in a lawsuit over the fly ash. But far as I'm concerned, you check that at the door when you walk in the school as a board member for anything to do with the students. I've stood at the school board and said this very same thing. If you can't check your emotions and the way you feel about what's going on out there, then you don't belong on the school board. That's the way I feel. I've served on this board before, guys. I was an MSBA rep for this area. I've had all the training. I've even had the sexual training, I'm not sure what it is. But I had to have it for my granddaughter's school at Holy Rosary because I go there and do some stuff. And I also volunteer and help with the kids. Do I want to be on this school board? I didn't want to be until I started going to meetings and seeing what was going on. I was ashamed of what I seen the board doing. And I told them that. Here's the way I feel it is. It's about the kids. They should be able to learn appropriately in a safe environment. If we can't do that, we need to change things. That's how I feel, guys. And you know me, I am blunt, to the point, and I'll put up with any BS. And I've used the word transparency more than once at these meetings. Got that from you, sir. So, and I, I'm tired of the hiding behind the closed-door meetings and not answering the questions that people are asking. I'm sick of it. My number one goal is to make sure those kids are taken care of and get a good education. That school is not what it used to be when my kids went there. I can guarantee you that. Guarantee it, I have seen it. I talked to a couple of parents when I drove into town today and asked them, I want to know the truth. I don't want any lies. They said the same thing, their kids are a lot better off now. I hate that, it sucks. And I'm sorry you guys are in this position right now. It shouldn't be that way. Now I'm ready for your questions.
They're all, so five all over.
Okay, you'll have to ask because I really wasn't paying any attention when you asked, Joy. I was just thinking.
You're good. Basically, Jeff, it's, it's what you think the role of school board member is? And actually, part of the other part of that question is advocating for the parents and kids.
Yes, yes. I feel the school board's number one job is to make sure that kids get a good education in a safe environment. Also, while making sure the parents are happy with what you're doing and the community is happy with what you're doing. The community isn't happy, here we go.
Principals, they say thing, uh, deciding, and, and this, this may actually, I'd ask this to everybody. Don't even have to worry about it. But we're also in twenty twenty-five, but I know there's a lot that's going on in a lot of the other schools. And I would hate to see this, I mean, I hate seeing them in the end.
Yes.
But like I said, you guys have done such a good job. You guys actually are like a private school or a homeschool in the top somewhere. I mean, that's, that, everything I'm hearing, that's what I'm finding out. But it's basically principals deciding on curriculum or sensitive topics, adult things that shouldn't be in it.
Yeah, and I, I agree with you, I wish we wasn't, it wasn't that a way anymore, but it is. Um, I think the school's handled things pretty well. There's some issues that need to be touched on. Maybe some new policies and procedures need to be worked on, I think they're doing that, I don't know. But I feel we need to touch on some stuff and make sure everything, the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed, everybody's protected and it's done the right way and the correct way and not behind closed doors.
The other one was your views on safety policies for the kids and the teachers?
Here's the way I feel on that. I think being such a small school, that's probably been overlooked in the past. Didn't have issues like that. Now they're having to deal with it. So we need to make sure everybody's held accountable. Everybody knows what they're supposed to do in issues like that. And the procedures and the paperwork and everything is done correctly and the right way. And handled with appropriate personnel that needs to know what is going on in any situation, whether that be law enforcement or whoever.
Fourth one is, uh, obviously, the fly ash contamination. obviously, the fly ash contamination is down there. Uh, some people are for closing the school, others are they believe it's safe. My question is, how will that, just that issue reflect on how you conduct business as a school board member?
I'm going to conduct business as a school board member without my issues. I'm going to conduct it as concerning the school, the employees, making sure they feel safe there, students feel safe, and the parents feel safe sending their kids. But also, with that being said, and I'm not here to make anybody mad, but the numbers don't jog, guys. I've done the math. I've got them here on my phone. When it costs us so much more money to teach them out there than it does to send them to Clinton, now I have a problem. Maybe I'm doing the math wrong, but I was a carpenter for forty-some years. I'm pretty good with math. The numbers don't jog on what I'm hearing, okay? That is an issue that needs to be looked at. Whether we keep the doors open or out there or not, that's got to be discussed, but we got to make sure the kids, the parents are taken care of first and the employees.
Uh, the last one would be, can you give me a a scenario, a time where you had with limited information and division in the community that, uh, you had to make a tough decision?
I try to have my ducks in a row before I make any decision. I filled the paperwork out for the school board once and threw it away, went to another meeting, filled it out again. Um, far as the issues that we're having out there, that doesn't pertain to the school board, other than the fly ash at the school, if we have that. Everything else checks at the door. But far as making hard decisions, I make the appropriate decisions with the information I have, and I haven't really had to do that. I don't have the kids in that school. I'm retired, I'm busy, but I will take time to go do what I think needs to be done, if that's the case. I've been there. I've done it before. I've passed a lot of the rules and regulations that the MSBA has passed over the years. So I'm willing to do it. I'm saying I want to, but I will. They may not like me because I am very upfront and forward and blunt. That way we don't have, worry about no issues. That all you got for them? How about you, Jake?
No, Jeff, he covered everything. I was about one and a half.
All right. Thank you, guys. Be glad to hear from you. I got other things to do. Appreciate it. See you later.
Who was next to go call then?
Yeah.
We're not on here till ten.
Okay. Let's see. Is it a call in? Was Dana Tribble coming in? Or we called?
At ten fifteen.
Ten fifteen, she's coming in.
Was there anybody else that put in an application other than the? Seven? Did we, originally got?
No.
Nope.
A real five? Was it five we originally got or was it seven?
We've got seven.
Seven's all we got.
Okay, okay.
So anyway, uh, we got, uh, lesbians, Deborah and Charles. And we need to call them. Can we join? You probably don't know enough about their story.
I don't, I don't sure.
I really, hey, what? I'm gonna call them, try to put them on speaker. I'll lay them right up here. Make sure they're here.
Hey, Mark, do you have any questions?
Oh, it's what I'm talking to, Jake.
Yeah, I'd be honest with you, those are two of the questions that you talked up and asked. Those are the two questions I would have asked, but it's those.
He covered all right there.
Yeah.
All right. He's checking on.
Hello?
Hello, Deborah?
Yes?
Hey, this is Jim Stone, Henry County Presiding Commissioner, and I have with me, uh, Mark Larson and Jake's on the phone and Amy. And anyway, was wanting to talk to y'all a little bit, and I had a note here to give y'all a call. Is David there too?
He is, yes.
Okay, I'll tell you what, I've got you on speakerphone, and I'm gonna lay you over here, and and Mark's got some questions too. Anyway, uh, you might give us a little synopsis of you and David, probably, or one of your, I don't know how to do that. Do you want, Mark, just?
I'm just, just a little.
Okay.
Nothing over the top.
Don't get him. Can you hear all right?
So sorry, yes.
Okay.
We're we're down on Interstate, just out east of New Orleans, so we in a place where you, we might lose your signal.
Yeah, we'll watch you down there in New Orleans.
We're we're left Gulf Shores this morning, hit to Lake Charles, Louisiana.
All right, Mark.
Uh, Deborah?
Yes?
Can you just, what what we're trying to give is just a little bit of background information right off the bat from probably from each of you, uh, get a feel, you know, and like I said, it doesn't have to be detailed or anything. Just, just a little bit of of background history, I guess.
Okay. I was, you don't know me, but I was on the roof for twenty-seven years, so I, uh, I know a lot about what's going on out in Davis County.
Okay.
Actually, I thought we were going to leave the community last year, is why I resigned from the roof board, but we ended up not moving, so we're retired. Don't bet too much anymore.
Okay. Well, let let me do, we we basically, what I've got is I've got five questions, uh, just to get a feel for where you and David both are. Uh, I I can ask the questions. You can answer them individually. Uh, probably make it easier, that way we don't have to go through it with each one of you. Uh, but I I guess my my first question is, what do you think is the role of a school board member as far as advocating for the parents and the children?
My main concern right now is to keep the kids safe. Uh, you know, with the issues that are uh, my concern is keep us kids safe.
Uh, on my part on that, I would be concerned about the contamination that's out out there.
Okay.
Yes, they took, they took the word of horned lavatory warriors that's representing people. Uh, it's lawsuits filed against them, and I I mean, it should have been a lot more testing done before they shut the school down.
Let let me ask you, I, like I said, I've got five of these. Um, what what do you think as far as the principles that you guys have for deciding on the curriculum or sensitive topics, uh, like, you know, your library content? What what type of scenarios that would be allowed to go on in the school?
It's what are you referring to is what? I don't understand what that question is, what you actually mean.
Uh, if if, like, trying to figure out a way to say this, I don't want to get in trouble.
I understand. That's really why I'm asking it. If you're talking is maybe the, uh, whatever they call it, the, uh, LBCs or whatever it is, or the books.
Yep. There you go. There you go.
Being banned and things like that, I, you know, my gosh, you know.
We grew up.
I grew up with that, and I think that the teachers should have the ability to explain the definitions and and how times were back then, how times are now, is the difference in in. If they're not capable of doing that, then maybe someone else needs to have their jobs so you can explain how life actually was then and now.
There's nothing wrong with having those books. The teachers just need to to be able to explain the difference between what went on then and how life is now.
Okay. Uh, the third question. Excuse me. Is your views on the safety policies? Uh, what kind of policies would you support and what types would you be against?
I'm back again. It's, what are we talking about? You know, we've been to some of these board meetings, and there's been parents that have been concerned about bullying children on the playgrounds and stuff. Now, they, the leadership acted stopping that, you know, if this is true. Now we're back around again at the board meeting. We're back as to, is this school contaminated? Should these kids even be here? I've been told there's been a petition put together by the teachers and the employees that they don't even want to teach out there just because it's an unsafe place to be. I mean, I need a lot more work done before they just decide that these things public to ask the parents or the taxpayers as to what to do.
Okay. Uh, so that will actually roll into this one. Um, it's navigating the fly ash contamination issue. Uh, there are people I know that are calling for the closure of the school, and then there's others that believe that it's safe, uh, and and want to continue operations. Where do you guys stand and how would you handle this?
Well, there needs to be a lot more testing done before you just take one or a word for how bad this is. Still within the safe limits of what our government says. Uh, far as, uh, if it isn't, then it ought to be close, but then it turns back around again, uh, the taxpayers, you know, we have, you know, I've heard so many different stories that for the thirty-seven that's out there, it's costing. One story says twenty-two thousand dollars per student. Another one of them, I don't know who told me this, but it was forty-one thousand dollars, you know? Getting their money, their money's worth for that, and I believe the children are even being liked even more, but not having, you know, a a decent education and all the opportunities that a larger school might offer.
You know, there are, I don't, I don't know how many different labs have to fly ash question at that school. There's been so many of our neighbors that have had it tested, and some have come back with no problems whatsoever. And others that have gone through attorneys to be tested are coming back high. You know, what do you believe?
Well, if you're, I don't want the panels, never have. Ever since I've heard about the panels five, six years ago, I said, I don't want these panels. I don't want to look at them. But, you know, I don't own all the property around me where they're going to be at, so, you know, what am I supposed to do? Uh, I've heard in the school board meetings that this school ever had no problems till the panels come in, and that was the great evil. I have no idea about that nonsense. So, uh, I don't like the panels. If that's the question, you're, it wouldn't answer for me. I don't want them, but I'm gonna have to live with them.
Yeah, no, no, actually, that 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 wasn't, but, uh, let me ask you this. This is the la, this is the fifth question. Um, have you got, it's it's for both of you. Uh, can you guys tell me a time that you had to make a tough decision when the community was divided and the information was limited, excuse me, limited? What'd you guys do?
Your question clearly broke up for me. I didn't understand you.
Uh, I'm wanting you guys to tell me a time that you had to make a tough decision when the community was divided and the information was limited. What what was your guys' response to that?
Oh, the information is limited. Every time you seen something was gonna happen in a board meeting, they always went into a closed session, and they were, wouldn't tell nobody about anything with what was taking place. And that was, you know.
The community is a lot of things right now. Between the fly ash and the solar and the issues that have been going on at the school, you, you have to go with whatever you feel is the correct to make.
Okay.
You know, you you can't let your neighbors make your decision for you. And that's what's happened. That's what's happening out there, you know? People are making decisions to do this or not do this, and, you know, they're a neighbor enemy now instead of their best friend.
Right, right.
But, you know, you you have to, you have to go with what you feel is right for you or your family.
Okay.
Okay, Jake. Okay. Jake, you have anything?
Yeah, I do. I've got one question.
Okay.
What was, uh, and they may have touched on it, and I mean, I just didn't hear it, but there's a petition going around from, for the teachers to sign that they don't want to work out there? Is that, is that true or is that just rumor?
Yeah, that's, no, it's, I mean, we've seen the petition, uh, on Facebook where all of the the teachers and the employees at the school have signed it saying they do not want to go to work out the fly ash. They do not feel safe going back out there to work. And as far as I know, that is employed at that school has signed it.
Okay.
Except for maybe the principal, superintendent, whatever she's called.
Right. Then the only other thing was, uh, the children, can you check your motions and everything at the door to where the kids in the top row are?
Well, you would have to. I mean, you know, that's the way I was with the board, uh, the roof board. You you have, you have to do, you might have to deal with someone like or don't agree with, but you have to keep that to yourself. You can't let that make your decision.
Yeah.
Okay. There you go.
Uh, no, I don't.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Yes. What are you going to make a decision? Do you know?
Well, we hope to have it done by tomorrow.
Tomorrow? My, okay.
Okay.
That sounds good.
All right, all right.
Thank you.
We'll be getting back. All right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye.
While we're here, this is school parent.
Okay. Okay. Dana Tribble's going on the show. Huh? She's early, yes.
Yes. That's fine. Okay.
So, I mean, that's the only one way I have left.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's the only one way I have left. How's things going you?
Oh, pretty good, test every day, but still waiting on some results.
Oh, okay.
For all the results.
Okay, no.
Yeah, big waiting game.
Yeah.
Hey, does anybody else in there have a minute?
Nope, I have the other ten here too, Bruce, all them, yeah.
Okay, that's fine, I just have a question for you. Dennis got the updated road inventory in or done yet, or have you heard?
Uh, no, he hasn't. I don't think so either. He's in here, yes.
Okay.
I'll try to check with him today, but I don't think he has.
Okay.
He's been working on something, I forgot what it was yesterday.
And I know that has been showing down on four.
Yeah.
Four fifty in Leeville, county.
And they're, they're getting ready, and we, to his, oh, he wanted to put up for bid on beans. Then once another dump truck. He wanted to bid on that.
Kind of need to find out on a road whenever you can.
What road is it?
Oh, you know, I was going to draw a blank, it's down there by finding, is that one? That was, Dennis found that the map set is private, but it changed the sign, and then.
All right, I'll ask you.
Okay, I'd say O C County voted it in to adopt the road.
They voted in to adopt the road?
Yeah, O C special, but we also need to find out if it's actually, if it's on our inventory, there's no need to adopt it, you know, or whatever. So, I'm just trying to find out.
Did you tell them that lady called about Booth Road again, or a different one?
Oh, yeah, I had another call on Booth Road, but Mark was handling it, I told him, Mark, it's his half, you know, he has half of that, let's see there.
Yeah. And say Dennis told me that as soon as the payment company, whichever one, I don't know which one. Well, yeah, I told you guys this the other day, that indication, I forgot.
Yep, yep, yep.
She was not happy.
Well, I'm not. Say, and I talked to Clinton County about possibly doing some patches, and the company was going to be right there, and they said that maybe it was going to get all those uh, brand smart, see what company you use, or was going to use. Because they said they normally use the company out of the bay. Who that is, I'm not sure.
Okay.
See, that's who I was on the phone with when, I was on the phone with Charlene whenever you called earlier.
Oh, okay. Anyway, we're just waiting now, we've got about fifteen minutes. Do you want me to call you back?
Yeah, you can't, you want to.
Do you know whether you need a bathroom break or not?
Yeah, it's going to be a bad idea. I don't think you all want to hear me do that.
Okay, all right, okay. We'll call you on.
You need to call back with.
All right.
Is there a petition after?
No, there is a letter from the teachers asking for the school board to move forward on litigation. And it was a closed session document from personnel that was put on Facebook.
A letter without, but I mean, it was just a letter?
It was a letter asking for the board to move forward on litigation for the staff to have some sort of.
Call back.
Well, health, you know, testing if necessary.
Did, did, did they, I mean, did you guys do that? Did you guys engage in litigation? Seems like, it's kind of a no lose situation. I mean, it, yes and no. If it proves to be true, then you're in it. And if it proves not to be true, it didn't toss you, so. Who'd you say? Maggie, Maggie, the lady that was in here? That we could actually get something done at Booth Road, or we could find out? We, we need to know what's ours and what's not ours. I mean, that, that decision, that's the first performance.
Christie would be the one to start, I mean, of course, the mayor, but she, she locked up Christie first. That's it.
Because that's kind of seems like the starting point.
Yeah.
Is we need to know what's ours and what's not ours.
According to them, it's all ours.
I'm dead serious, I mean, if it's all ours, put it back in the ground. I bet they'll take it quick once you do that, decide to do that. We can take care of it, it's gravel. You're just, we're just spending money nonstop, throwing patches out. They're, they're good in August, soon as it gets cold, wet, yeah, they pop right back out. This is the last one.
Well, I don't know if the special to adopt that in the road. They have whistles. I do not know either, where do they fall under the guidelines in? Because for us, it has to have the proper sized whistles and everything else, and the road with, if you haven't got all that.
They have to meet specs.
Somebody going to have to do some. So, because we can't just, I need to just say, well, okay, now it's a county road. But sooner or later, that'll come back to haunt you. Huh?
We don't want that.
I mean, that's what, that's what would happen.
Right.
When you put that stuff down and not have any documentation, and they, I, in fact, I'd like to find out whether the special could vote in. If that's the case, but if that's the case, then, then why do you have a proper way to have a road?
Specials, you can hardly find anything in state statute.
I think, I don't, I just don't think, because everything I read has to be the town, town, county.
Right.
Because the county has to, they're still the ones going to mark the road. I think, but I don't know, that's probably, even though I know when special sees vote in, then they take over, it's their baby. But then, that's also because it covers everything. And if that's the case, well, you sure don't need to be doing anything, because that's the wrong thing to be doing. Because everything you're doing is just coming back to haunt you. Okay. Doesn't sound like Jake's going to be back. Didn't sound that way, did it? Hey, Dana?
Yes. Joining us on up here for everything.
Ready for you.
Sorry.
That's fine, that's fine. Okay, Dana, we've been starting off, give us a little bit of history. I'll tell you what, excuse, let me make one phone call.
Okay.
Hello?
Yes, Jake? Okay, Dana's here, we're ready to start with her.
Can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you all.
Okay, all right, Dana, well, we've been starting with a little bit of history yourself, and Mark's got some questions.
Okay, history, kind of like with the school?
Yeah, with what you, some of your past, what you do.
Uh, well, I have two kids, that would be the ages of kids at Davis. We've been pretty happy with the school and stuff until this year, and I started attending school board meetings. I've been disappointed with how some of the other members have treated the audience, as in community members and parents, telling us if we don't like what they're doing, we can go somewhere else, pay our own tuition somewhere else. That's true, but I also think it's a public school, so you want your public school to be good. That's where parents want to be there. I've also had two of the members on there say to other parents this year, like, then run for school board. If you don't like what we're doing, run for school board. Well, now, I ran for school board. So, I want to make the school better, I want it to be safe for the kids. I think that's what they deserve. I think a safe environment is what they deserve. So that's why I'm running, to be able to contribute to that. Just myself, I'm a stay-at-home mom, so I want to be involved and just try to do what's right by the kids.
Okay. Mark?
Dana, what, basically, I'm ready to come in, you're getting the same questions. I guess the first one, what I want to find out is, as a school board member, what do you think your role is, or what would you like for your role to be as far as advocating for the parents and the kids?
Well, first, I would want to start by listening to them. And if it's kids who are happy there, good, I want to hear that too. Kids that aren't happy there, or families, I should just say families. I just feel like that's been missing, that some people are not wanting to take everyone's comments to heart. So, as, I mean, the role of it, I would say, is partially, it's hiring and managing your staff. Like, I feel like there needs to be accountability for the staff as well, there's no accountability. The board is over, I mean, teachers will report to the principal, but then who does the re-prince, who does the principal report to? Nobody, but the board is kind of over the principal, so that's been lacking, they don't seem to want to know anything that's happened, or do anything about it. Meetings, I mean, you'd have your meetings, and you would, I don't really know what happens in closed session. I've never been privy to that, but open session, I definitely think it's important to hear from the community and take their comments to heart.
Yep, yep. I guess the, the other question I asked everybody was, what, what, what principles, what principles would you use for deciding on the curriculum? And any sensitive topics? What adult content, you know, I hope you know where I'm trying to go with this. I, I, I don't believe that it is, I've, I've told everybody, I don't believe it's in the school now, but that doesn't mean, I, I guess, and I probably should have asked everybody else the same thing. You never know what the state's going to do, that's the issue. So I guess my, my, my question to you would be, are you a fighter? Do you approve of it? Or where, where do you stand with some of this?
I guess maybe I do need to be more specific, that's exactly what you're talking about.
Uh, you know, like, age-appropriate type scenarios, you know.
So, saying like the state may ask people to, to teach something that.
Yes, yes. I mean, or, or, I guess my question is, like I said, I probably shouldn't ask them all this, but I think I got the right perspective of what they were saying. My question is, especially in the day and age that we live in, you either roll over, or you fight it. Doesn't mean you're going to win, you know, but, and that's, that's, for us up here, this, this is all about the kids.
Yeah.
And I want to make sure whoever we put in there, it's all about the kids, that's it. I don't, I don't, issues, fighting among, you know what, you guys can all worry about that in April.
Right.
That's when your vote's going to come. My concern is that we do the right thing for the kids and the parents, and, I mean, so.
That's where I'm at, very much so, and I have been trying to fight for what I think, I mean, again, there's two sides, but.
Sure, sure.
I'm adamant about what I believe, and I've been trying to fight for that. So in this, in that nonspecific case, I think I would still.
Okay, okay, that, that, and that, that.
I'm, I'm not, yeah, I'm not going to be afraid to say what I would think, yeah.
The other thing would be the views on safety policies. Which ones that you would support? Which ones you wouldn't support? Where, where do you? which ones you wouldn't support, uh, where, where do you, where do you stand with that?
Well, I guess I don't really know the policies, um, as in-
What would be type that you would, like, maybe want to put in, or?
Well, we do have a resource officer now, so I think that's a plus. I think some of the things that happened may not have happened if that person was there at that time, so I agree with that. What I've seen in school board meetings is there's an issue with policy, and then following through on policy. You can put a policy in, but the person doesn't do it, and then there's no accountability for it, that's where we're at, and so I've been very frustrated with that part of it. So I would like to see some kind of, I don't know if you can make it a policy for the school board to do something about that if nothing happens or not, but that's what I would like to try to get to, or fight for.
The other one, and I've told everybody else, is this kind of the elephant in the room scenario. The fly ash contamination issue. There are people I've heard that want to close the school, there's others that believe it's safe. I guess, I'm, I'm, I'm wanting to know where, where you stand on that, and what would you, what would you be willing to do, can you have, do you have any ideas of what could be done, I mean, I mean, I know I do, so, but I'm not on this, I don't wanna get involved in it.
Yeah.
So, uh, I guess I'm just wanting to know what your, what your thoughts are.
Well, I was here at the last meeting, we kinda talked about being at the school now, I had concerns about that part, with not having any kind of commitment. I think, right now, based on what the EPA has said, with their actionable levels versus risk levels, I think is what they called them. I did agree with the choice to go back, but my concern then is, for now, because now they are testing it, now they are gonna keep tabs on it. If they, for some reason, don't in the future, then I'm concerned again, or if, um, levels change, because the EPA is trying to be more lax for coal plants, possibly, what does that do to us? The effects are the same on our bodies, whether they say the level's here or here, so I would be, for now, I think the school is appropriate. But then it would have to be down the line, if something changed with levels, or if they just said, we're done testing, we think it's fine. Then I'd have concerns, I still wouldn't say, okay, we're out, but I would think, keep tabs on that, and figure out then. I don't think they should be at the church. If we're gonna go to school in Clinton, we just go to school in Clinton. So I think it's either the school out there, or if you don't wanna close the school down at that point, I don't think we have to do that, but if you're not feeling safe to be at the, at the building, but your only other option is Clinton, then for that time period until a lawsuit or something can get resolved, I think you just have to pay tuition somewhere. In, in the meantime, so if the school doesn't close, but you're also not putting kids at risk.
Okay.
So.
Uh, the, the last question, and it kind of actually piggybacks off of that one. I guess, if you had a time, or you could tell us about a time, that you actually, yourself, had to make a tough decision, when, when the community was divided, and information was limited. Do, is there anything in your background that, and I know this sounds, kinda sounds like a funny question, I probably shouldn't explain it to everybody, but for me-
Yeah, it's kind of not a very, um, common occurrence.
Right. For me, what it does is, it, it actually shows me, I guess, not only commitment, but if you're willing to take a stand, when everybody else tells you to go on, but I'm a big believer in, in people, if you believe something, then you either believe it, and you're willing to fight for it, or you really don't believe it.
Right.
And those, I think, from what I've gathered, from everything that's going on down there, that's what you need on that school board.
One way or the other.
To get this, yeah, yeah, and, and mocks next to me, this way or that way. But us, sitting on the outside looking in, it seems to me that you guys kinda need that warrior spirit to get this rolling in the right direction, because you don't wanna lose what you guys worked so hard over the years to obtain. So, that's, that's what, that is actually, because I know when I asked this question, everybody's kinda feeling weird.
Yeah.
But, that, that's, that's thing in a nutshell.
Well, I do see your point there, and I agree with that, but I would also say, if you're on a board of seven people, not to fold, but you do have to work together and come to one answer.
Right.
So I'm not, like, against listening to people and trying to find a compromise, that's not maybe all this person and this person, but somewhere in the middle that is still beneficial to the school or to the kids. Not saying I have to have my way one hundred percent, but yeah, I would fight for my thing, but you are, you have six other people that you have to come to, some kind of four to three at least agreement.
Once you get a majority, everybody needs to be behind.
Right, right.
They'll need to have them, have them still go another way, that's-
Yeah. So, I don't, I don't have, like, an experience that you were asking, like, a time that that's happened, I don't think. This is a very, I think, unique situation. So no, I mean, I have not had an extreme thing, like, or even anything less extreme, really, that I've had to make a decision on a board or something about.
Jake, you have any questions?
Uh, no, Dana's coming over next.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Dana.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Did you wanna speak, say, did you wanna bring up anything?
Just, there was no petition, I mean, that was a letter that was written, and that was supposed to only say with the school board, because the teachers were giving their legal opinions.
Yeah.
So, just that, if you have other questions regarding what's happened at the school, I'm willing to give you numbers, I'm not gonna give you my opinion, because I am one person, and it's not my decision, it's the school board's decision. And I will give you all the facts you want, um, if you're wondering about per pupil, I gave that last board meeting, per pupil that they're calculating, it's not accurate, because it has a formula. If you're wondering about our standards, if you're wondering about curriculum, ask me for that, so.
Well, our case, hey, this is first, I'm never, and when you go to pointing boards, it's a no-win situation. Doesn't matter what we do, somebody's not gonna be happy.
Somebody ain't gonna like?
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's the worst side, but now that we do it, I mean, never dreamed this was even in the-
The beauty of it is, in April, whatever we do, if you guys don't like it, or somebody doesn't think you can be-
Everything will be changed, and that- Okay. Now, I guess that's all. Thank y'all for coming. Thank y'all. All right, Jake. Still there?
Yep, I'm tuning in.
All right, all right.
Not being honest with you, I think I did-
I guess, could've paced on you.
Yeah, that's okay, I think it's just fine.
Well, I tell you what, we kinda hurt all of them too, being thinking about what, what your thoughts are.
Okay.
And then we probably need to try to do something tomorrow. Let them know.
So, are you gonna call me tomorrow, uh, for a decision, or you guys, are you guys needing time to set the pace on it, or would, are we the only one delivering?
No, we got Bruce and-
Bruce is sitting here.
Oh, Bruce is here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So anyway.
Jake, do you have anybody that you, I mean, after what you've heard, do you have anybody that you were thinking of?
I was thinking of Joy, just because she, she did run for the last one. I was thinking of Jeff, because he's out poking, he's got a big in mind, and he wants what best for the kids. I mean, I think they all want what best for the kids, so, I mean, but I like Jeff's approach on that. I'd have to think on the other two. To, on who, who else, I guess, what I should say. How about you guys?
We didn't have- Jake, you weren't on the phone for Amanda Cothern and Barry Schmetting, were you?
No.
No, I was.
Yeah.
I called in, but Amanda had already started, I heard you're Amanda the greatest, but I heard Barry pretty good, and, uh-
Well, we did, we were broadcasting, we still are broadcasting, so if you wanna go back and watch that, just-
I mean, I definitely will.
Okay.
And then, you know, talk tomorrow.
Yeah. Jake, I'm gonna tell you, the, the two that you picked, I actually had thought, I actually, Jim and I had talked about probably putting some men on there. I actually had, instead of Joy, I had that Charles Lusby kinda, but after I heard Joy talk, I think she, I, I think her and Jeff are gonna be a good fit.
Yeah.
Uh, the other two that I had come up with was that Amanda, Amanda Coth- Cothern, whatever, yeah, and that Barry Schmetting, the guy that owns, uh-
Jim's Sporting.
Jim's Sporting Goods. But those, 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 and like I said, those are the four that I had come up with, Jim, I don't know what, if you had any- Because it'd be a whole lot easier to walk in Thursday, instead of trying to figure this out Thursday while we're in.
If Jake wants to go back and watch the-
Let me go back and watch Amanda, because I think you're Amanda pretty well.
All right, why don't you go back there and, uh, watch, and we'll probably hang around a little bit, and call us back.
Okay, you let me, you let me, can you keep talking, man?
All right, okay. Bye, bye. Dana, I think she's got kids, huh? Doesn't she? The way it sounded, which that has nothing to do with what we're talking about, but, yeah. Who's other members on the board?
Who is what?
Other members on the school?
Uh, Cassie-
Cassie Cook.
Cassie Cook, Tia West, and Beth Wilson.
Okay. Tia West. I don't know. Who, Tia West?
She was one of that, she, she, she was one of the flower sundress, and sitting-
Over the other day?
Yeah.
The other day.
She's, she's actually vice president, and I think Cass is president.
Okay, all right. Well, I was just wondering how Dana would be on there. Dana Tribble, one just kinda-
Just got done.
What's your thoughts there? I got, I'll see if I can go along with my thoughts on it.
I'll, I'll tell you what worries me about, and I'll just be honest, some of them, you've got, you've got some of these people that are going to tend to lead to close the school. I don't care if they close it, I don't.
Uh, that's what-
But I don't wanna put somebody on there, this is-
Is she, is that her agenda? Okay.
I think that's part of it.
Okay, I didn't know.
I mean, that's, that's what, and, and the nice thing about it is, I, I, I I know that Amanda Cothern and Barry Schmetting are gonna want it, they're, they're good people, I know, Barry didn't remember.
Yeah.
But, they're good people, I, I think their idea is to work to make the school better. Now, if they can't do that, and then, 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 the people down there can close it.
I think Jeff will make-
Put somebody in that is gonna wanna close it.
No.
Because then it looks as if we-
I wanna have an open mind, right, that's my big thing.
That's it.
You don't want them to have an agenda to go any closer.
Amy, do you know any of, do you know any of these people?
I mean, in, in passing, but not-
Not, not really.
Joy Lusby isn't all election judge, so I have interacted with her previously, but not to any-
Yeah, she actually, she impressed me.
Yeah.
I mean, she really, because I actually, like, we had talked yesterday, I thought maybe that David Lusby, but then when we got him on the phone-
Charles Lusby.
Charles, yeah.
Kelly, Amy sent me a little note. Said, Charles, Charles, get it right. Well, it's Charles David, I guess, I didn't see. Thank you. It sounded like that, he probably wouldn't answer. It's thank.
And I was impressed with Jeff, not Jeff, I was impressed with Jeff, too.
Yeah.
Jeff, he is, he's straight to you.
I mean, he's-
He, he can be a little-
Kinda blunt, but I'll, I'll say this one, Jeff, if they all voted, he'd be behind it. My big thing is, I don't care, you can, you can disagree, but when the majority says, yes, I feel like, then you need, you need to be behind as a group, because if you're not, the other ones are working again, you, you haven't got anything.
See what Jake says when he comes back.
Yeah.
You think it raised a big stink? If I went to one of the city council meetings, and brought up about Booth Road?
I don't know, you heard of that?
See if we can get, I mean, because we, we need a resolution on this, we need to know what worked.
We need to know, and we need to know, and I've said that before, and you can't get anybody, you're really come up with it, just like, I can tell you, just like Eric, but, just like I, and I, same way. You know, a lot of them don't like it, fine.
You're gonna need to-
Make your ground road out.
Pardon me?
You'll probably find it advantageous to go to Public Works Committee meeting first, really, because the council-
Public Works?
Council will probably refer to them anyway. That's how that works.
When do they have theirs?
Seven AM, uh, every other Tuesday morning. We're not doing city council, so it'd be on the, well, after the first Tuesday of the month, that's a city council meeting, my first of July, I guess. Well, after the first Tuesday of the month, that's a city council meeting, my first of July, I guess, or... And then, so this next week, come out, it's on the seventh, I guess, or eighth, seven AM. I got a doctor's appointment on the eighth, the next one. I just think we need to at least find out if they're, you know...
Well, if they're not willing to work, then fine, then we'll have to do what we gotta do.
Right, that's kind of my thought.
I mean, that's just, and I've always said that, the big thing is, cause you gotta have somebody black top. But we have the same issues down, get down towards, uh, Montrose there, a couple of them roads, that, that made black tops out of it.
Yeah, I'd call over, get on the agenda through the public works office, walk in there. Like, like, like to show up, so they slot you a time to...
All right.
Yeah, cause we, about every two weeks, take a phone call over to Booth Road.
They probably take a lot more phone calls than if you make it all gravel too.
Well... I don't know, so, I, I gotta tell you, some of the gravel roads are smooth.
Better than that.
Drive van saying, I'd rather drive my gravel roads.
I have a intermittent dash, it's starting every, when... I sense a simply auto mic.
Yeah. I, I hit the holes yesterday, honestly.
Fortunately, it doesn't affect the function of the cars, the dumb sensor has to do with traction control.
Yeah.
None of these unnecessary safety things in cars.
Yeah, we shouldn't.
Tell them they have to do it in the morning. Do something. Okay.
So, Jeff, Barry? Amanda, is that the other one?
It'd be Jeff, Amanda, Joy, and Barry.
I see.
And the nice thing is, I think all of those have at one time, another's been on...
About the scoreboard.
Mm-hmm. They've got, somebody said something about eighteen months, they have to have that, uh, training, they've, they've actually got...
I think they'll have to do the training. Yeah, I mean, to me, I would think anybody new coming in, if they've been gone for a year or two years, they need to go to the training, and, and they can do that.
But supposedly, they've got a year to do it, not eighteen months.
I think you got time to do it, but it's something they need to do.
Yeah.
If I was gonna be on the board, I'd want that.
Yeah, I wouldn't be on the board.
I wouldn't be on, I wouldn't be on the club board. I'd hate to be on club school.
Kind of like the senior tax board, huh?
Huh?
The senior tax board?
No.
We were paid handsomely.
That would be new.
We were paid handsomely to sit on the senior tax board.
Oh, there you go, oh, yes, is that right?
Or the LIPC.
Oh, oh, where you getting dinner?
At least we get lunch, but we didn't get any tax board.
Oh, oh, you'll get a big kick out of this, I went down yesterday, see Mark, I was hearing Mark hell about, and not getting any of my emails, so nothing, never get nothing. Anyway, so, anyway, we was talking, Sebby said, hell, Jim, do you have it blocked? I said, shit, I don't think so, I said, hell. Anyway, anyway, Sebby, Sebby gets on the phone, against what? Hell, everything thing he had was blocked. Anyway, so, we unblocked everything, and shit, I missed the damn emails.
You're probably getting all sorts of emails now.
Yeah. Anyway, I was giving crap, and a lot of, Sebby went down, and then we got off on, on, uh, oh, it's about Mark, uh, Brad. So, anyway, he, I said, he was gonna send that email, a tax attune, I said, he said I did. I said, well, I didn't get it. So, anyway, we got talking about, and then we, was in, and Sebby, we sit there, and they worked fine, there wasn't no big deal, but everything from him. So, he said, give me your phone. So, anyway, he fixed me.
Yeah, I, Wendy gets mad at me for doing that, she's like, keep your fat fingers off of this stuff.
Yeah, and then, uh... But still, and I, I talked to him, and all of them saying, what I'm gonna do is put my teams on my iPad, and just...
Do it all in one?
Yes, because it's, I'm used to it, and as far as I'm concerned, it works good, and to me, I can get the screen out. Even though Sebby, he went in and blew it up, I can blow it up, but it's still not as, it's not as clear as mine, I'm just a better, better iPad.
But you're used to it.
Yeah, yeah, I'm used to it. But both of them told me, I don't think I'm gonna have to go check to, to finish it up. I got everything done, I downloaded it, but it don't recognize nothing, you have to be invited to him to get into the system.
Joy's gonna be hot this weekend.
Mm-hmm.
Were you gonna get in that parade?
Huh?
Were you gonna get in that parade?
Um, I don't think I'm even gonna get in it, um... I guess, uh... Part of me, I wanted to work, and, uh, that's kinda what I'm doing.
I didn't wanna do it, I was told, oh, you're supposed to be in.
I was tickled, uh, one of the things I found out, that acreage, I read it, holy shit. Well, anyway, it sold across the road, and he, and I thought, well, but, and they said, you can go ahead, baby, Jim, this year's, so I wrapped up the hay, cause I've done everything, I've received it, and so I've been taken care of. And then turned around, then he, the guy, who was that, said, call me, he said, well, Jim, it's going to be people in Florida. And they said, there's a no hurry, they're not moving here, he said, they want you to go ahead and just keep going, take care of it.
Yeah.
And do it, and say, if you'll do it, they'd be appreciated too, cause he said, what they're wanting to do someday, they're wanting to build a house over there. That's about it. I didn't wanna tell him, I don't know whether they thought about it, there's no real water, there's no electricity, I mean, you gotta run it. Well, and then, you've got problems out there, and if you drill a well, I've got drilled well, but I wouldn't wanna drink it, it's just water cattle out there.
Sulphur?
Yeah, it, the one over there at farms, I was basing mine at home, but it's still, it's, it's got some in it, you taste it. I don't, I'm not a big sulfur fan, so I don't like it.
No.
I don't...
How deep did you have to go?
Uh, I went, uh, at home, I think ours is around one hundred feet, something like that.
Four sixty-eight.
Somewhere, and then, uh, now Jeff down to his house, I think he went, I think his is a little deeper, I think it was coast here the years, but, but he sits a lot higher than I do. And then, uh, now we're at the farm, that one's three, it's three hundred and some, but it's...
Everybody around me has got...
Yeah.
...room that's sulfur water. And I went deep enough, kind of, I, I mean, my water, if I had to drink it, it's as good as the...
Yeah.
...water, it's crazy.
Oh, anyway.
Yeah, Rick said they hadn't gotten any more.
Huh?
Rick said they hadn't gotten any more, but we'd have to look at...
That Rick, oh, yeah, they had, they had, they probably got, I don't know, twenty, uh... He didn't have ten anymore, didn't think, twenty-five, thirty, forty, I don't know.
It was good.
He just hopes that they do something.
Do it before the budget.
Before we spend twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah, the state wants to get rid of it, that's one they'll probably get through court pretty quick.
Yeah.
Once it gets filed.
Hey, they're in trouble. No, just like here, I take, what, hey? They do all that, and that's what they've done, they just kinda shut everybody down, oven squared.
I actually pulled in, I started the park on this side, but I thought, ah, they may be setting more stuff up, so...
Oh, they're, it'll be full.
They had most of this parked over at Benson Center yesterday.
Yeah, now all the trucks are set nowhere, empty, or where they unloaded. Is there some water sticking outside?
Yeah. Oh, we don't have that yet.
Are we still on there? Are we still on there? Turn that off.
Shut that off, I'm just sitting there.
Good time, yes, Jake.
Hey, Jake, I'm sorry, it's a little bit longer, I had to find it.
Oh, you did.
Y'all still there?
Yeah, yeah.
There, I did, I called, no, I'm sorry. Would y'all, did y'all come up with anything?
Well, I just was kinda wondering what you've come up with too, I think we're all pretty close.
Sorry?
Who, who we had kinda talked about is, is, uh, actually Jeff, Joy, Mary...
And Amanda.
And Amanda.
I also like Dana.
Huh?
I also like Dana too. I think she would be really good on the board, it's just the, uh, it's not apparent, but... What do you guys think?
Which, then, which, you, instead of Amanda, or, or Dana?
I would rather have Dana than Amanda, that's just me. What do you guys feel? Or do you like Amanda?
Huh?
Maybe y'all didn't, maybe you're not for Dana, I don't know.
No, I'm not.
The only thing that worries me is what we were talking about.
Huh?
The only thing that worries me is what we were talking about.
Oh, Mark thinks... she wants to close it. Is that what you, Mark thinks she wants to close it.
Okay, okay.
Jake, Jake, well, here, here, because I think she actually would be good.
I think.
If she would, I, I think she's a little adamant about wanting to close it, and what I told Jim is, if, if they want to close this school, I honestly, I don't care one way or the other. That's up to them. That's their school. But I would rather put somebody in there till April, that we don't have to worry about them wanting to close the school, and if they can get things turned around and good, but come April, let the people decide who, you know, you see what I'm saying? And if they, they want to vote somebody in that wants to close it, that, hey, that's on them. It's not on us.
Did she run the last time?
No, that was, uh.
Joy.
Joy.
Joy ran.
Joy ran last time. And like I said, I was actually really impressed with her.
Yeah, yeah. I was actually, I was quite, who was the board that you said again? I, yeah.
Amanda.
Amanda.
Barry, Jeff, and Joy.
I think Jeff would be good.
Yeah, I think Jeff would be a pressure for the, the board.
A deep break.
I don't want to see it closed. I want it with us to the kids, and that, that's what I'm trying to think.
Right, right.
But they clearly need change. You good with that, Jim?
Yep, I'm fine. Whatever y'all want. Go. I'm not gonna argue. Which one? Go with Amanda, Barry, Joy, and Jeff?
Jeff.
Yeah, Jeff.
Yeah. I think like a good measure of people.
Yeah, they got, yep. Got two men and.
Yeah.
Two women.
Yeah, yeah. And.
And then, well, like you said, yeah, it'll only be till April, so.
Okay, I'll tell you what. I'll let you think about it. We'll talk to you tomorrow morning.
Okay.
And come on in.
Just give me a word.
All right. Okay, I'll call you in the morning.
All right, sounds good, Jim.
All right. If they're there, they can come in, start to work by then. Are they all? Yeah, yeah, tell them to come on in. It's fine. I'll second that. Motion been made and seconded during. I'll say aye.
Aye.